The meeting is now called to order. Can we please all stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr, here. Mr. Secala.
Here.
Mrs. Marinelli.
Here.
And Mr. Mandela.
Here. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. The meeting is open to the public for comments for items on the agenda. Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting. Good evening, board members. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
I attended the South End FSA meeting last week, and they were going through the various fall fundraisers and the status of what's happening there. And they will have, I think they were not going to have a meeting in December and then the reconvening in January. So that's the one update there. And the board, the rec board meeting had been canceled that night.
Right. Yep.
Yes, I attended the high school APT meeting last night. Actually, it was nice because it was my first, my first APT meeting. I now have a freshman, so it was a good meeting for me. There was a report by Lexie Derriman, representative, talking about December 13th, high school winter ball, and of course, all grades are getting ready and getting excited for the lip sync in January. They had a nice program for the middle school and the high school for the week of October 7th through the 11th, where they had a motivational speaker come in, Josh Dream, speak to the kids in a different sort of format, so that they shared that, the middle school and the high school. There was a real nice celebration of Veterans Day yesterday through the social studies department, where they shared the assignment that they gave to the students about interviewing a veteran. And, you know, I thought that was pretty important because, you know, there's such a disconnect sometimes between students and our veterans, particularly our older ones. So I thought that was a real nice assignment. And also talked about the debates that they held around the election time. And lastly, just their big important fundraiser, the senior parents were talking about project graduation and their big Super Bowl raffle to help fund project graduation at the end of the year for the seniors. Their next meeting won't be until, as I understand, January, January 13th.
Thank you. Moving on, moving on. We have a few presentations this evening. First, we're going to start out with an update from Mr. Featherman and Ms. Tavernier on the CUSAC process and where we are there. So let's hear how we're doing.
We're doing great, but if I may, I mean, you know, the star of the show here this evening.
Uh-oh.
Did you see Mr. Gallagher and our new mascot up there?
Please, let's get this, let's get this going here.
Yeah.
We waited a long time for this new mascot, Mr. Mangielli.
(audience clapping)
No, Captain Frye, ladies and gentlemen, how's it going?
I'd like to have Mr. Gallagher come up for a second, and he's going to give you an explanation of how things happened and how we have our new mascot here over at the high school. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mangielli. Three years ago, Steve Rom and Mike Vega came to me in my room and said they wanted to start a pep club. So we had a conversation on how that could go, because when you've put a bunch of teenagers in the stands, you have to be able to control them. So we had a really good conversation, and Steve and Mike, and they were the perfect two kids to start this because they had the connection with the kids, and we sat down and we set up some ground rules, and the kids have been really good about it. And we've had some really good showings with the pep club. At that time, we had the remains of a costume for the mascot. Freshman year, Pat Rom comes in and puts the head of the mascot on his head, and then I looked inside, and I'm like, there's probably things living in here.[316.27][316.27](laughter) So we threw it away, and the goal from that point on was to get a mascot. And Pat Rom and Paige Bootman came to me about a month ago and said, we want a can to get, raise money for mascot. And we, they went out on a Saturday and Sunday from a food town, and they raised the money for that outfit right there. They got a bunch of kids to come out and help them, and they were there from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon, two days. You know, that's an $800 outfit.
Wow.
So there was no way we were going to be able to afford that. So first, I'd like to thank all the residents of Cedar Grove and Verona and every other town that contributed, because the kids just put it out there, and all the kids had helped us out. But it made its first appearance Friday night at the football game. It was a big hit, and I just appreciate the effort the kids put in to make this possible.
Absolutely. What a great surprise.
(audience clapping)
Not yet. We've still got to try and figure out who's going to be wearing it, because we're trying to come up with how many different kids, because you have kids that play a bunch of sports that wear it, so they can't do it, throw a bunch of sports, and it does get worn.
I remember when I was in high school, you had a, I don't know if you want to call it audition for it, but you had to go out for it to get, to be the mascot, not, you know, then...
It'd be nice if we get enough kids to do that, that we can actually do that.
Yeah.
That'd be nice, and then you would demonstrate, you'd get more and more kids interested in doing it.
Right. Yep.
And I was telling the kids the last couple of days that this is not limited to boys, you know, and I don't want people to think only boys can be the mascot. Girls want to do it, that's fine, it just doesn't matter as long as they want to do it.
Is it really?
Yeah, it's pending. So, thank you very much.
No, thank you. Thanks for coming. That was awesome.
So the Panther is back. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mandala. I want to briefly go through the NJ CUSAC Quality Single Accountability Continuum that we were required to do this year. Every three years, districts in Essex County have to really self-evaluate what it is that they're doing. And every three years, the county comes out, and it's no longer a self-evaluation, it becomes a true evaluation. So we've done a very nice job, and I'd like to very quickly thank those of you that are here that participated in the CUSAC process, Mr. Secala being one of them, and essentially everybody sitting in the room here as well, all of our administrative team, a host of teachers, and we couldn't have done it without you, so thank you. Now, the document is extensive, and it's broken into five sections: Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel. I wouldn't dare go through every page of this with you, it is a tedious task, but I just want to let you know that it's an important process that really ensures that what we're doing has value, and I can assure you that it does. There are raw scores that are compiled by the district. We scored 80% in Instruction and Program, not where we want it to be. Districts need to score a minimum of 80% to maintain their desirable status. So we have some work to do in the Instruction and Program area, there's no doubt. Make no bones about it, 80% is not acceptable. But I can reassure you once again that the team that we have in place, both with administration and our teachers, is committed to improving that score. Fiscal management, 100%. Governance, 100%. Operations, 95%. Personnel, 100%. So we've done a nice job. We will, well, not we will, we have this posted on our website. If you have some time, by all means, go there and flip through it page by page. It's informative. If you have any questions after you've done that, shoot me an email, give me a call, I'd be happy to address any questions you have. Now, that's the District Reportments Review Document. Also found on our website is the Statement of Assurance, which needs to be completed every year on an annual basis by all the districts in Essex County. The SOA is also there for you to review. It's a companion document to the DPR, but again, the Statement of Assurance is done every year by the superintendent and his team to essentially confirm with the county that we are compliant with CUSAC on an annual basis. Again, please take your time to review that on our website. Any questions, let us know. What I'd like to do is have Mrs. Tavernier go through the Fiscal Management briefly, briefly, very briefly. Right? Governance and Operations section of the document.
All right, the Fiscal Management pertains to the day-to-day business operations of the school district. One of the biggest areas that the state concentrates in is the annual audit and to make sure that we are in compliance with all of our state and federal filings and reportings. And we are, we include a copy of our annual audit, and we also provide other documentation to the state with the DPR, which would be a sample of the Treasurer School Monies Report, which is generally approved on a monthly basis for the Board of Education, the Transfer Report, and any other documents that they deem that is necessary. All of the documents that they do request is detailed in our Board Policy and our Regulation section. So that's basically the Fiscal Management end of it. The Operations, or I should say, I'll just quickly touch on Governance, and that is the runnings of the school district, when we come down to hiring personnel and making sure that employees are trained, and if there's any other information that needs to be made available for parents of the students, for example, student handbooks, so that everyone is aware of what the code of conduct would be for employees and what the expectations are for each one of the school buildings. That's done in conjunction with the building principals, the Board of Education, and with the teaching staff. The Operations of the school district, once again, touches on the policies of the district to make sure that we are abiding by the policies and regulations that the Board approves every year at its annual reorganization meeting. And that incorporates, most recently, the HIB policies that were put in there for the school district, the testing which is done, and the, when I'm saying the standardized testing, and also the reporting of that standardized testing. The Operations, we have to make sure that we are very timely and that we have very low error rates when we are submitting the documentation to the state, and that's why there's a little short, you know, we were a little bit short as far as our total percentage points there, is that's a little, that's an area that we do need to work on slightly for next year.
Thank you. And briefly, relative to Instruction and Program, what does that entail? Well, Instruction and Program, right? Curricular areas, whether or not we have curriculum in place, if it's been reevaluated, if it's Common Core ready, right, Laura? I mean, we do these things, right? We do the, we've got it going on, right? Absolutely. But why 80%? Well, our proficiency data just isn't where it's supposed to be, needs to be, where we want it to be, but we're working on it, right, Laura? Absolutely. So the 20 percentage points that we lost were in the areas of our annual measurable objectives. Again, we're doing well in some areas, not so well in others. And tonight, you'll get a snapshot of exactly that. And we have lots of initiatives in place that we've been doing and will continue to do, and some new initiatives that we'll talk a bit about later on this evening, relative to why we scored only 80% in the Instruction and Program area. In terms of personnel, the score is 100%. I can't say enough about how the central office is run. The people that are there, from the Special Services Department to the Business Office to the Superintendent's Office, those files, the processes, the policies that are in place are tight, they're followed, they're accurate, and I'm very proud to say that they do an excellent job up there, and they represent us and you very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, just so the board is aware, just a couple of things that I picked up from going to the CUSAC meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong. What we're looking at here is a self-evalu, for the most part, is a self-evaluation.
Correct.
So we've evaluated ourselves, and we gave ourselves these scores.
We did.
And when CUSAC comes in in January, then they will review all of our self-evaluations.
Exactly.
And they may grade us higher, or lower, or keep it the way that it is.
That is correct.
So this is kind of like a first phase thing, and then we have to have it approved by, by the evaluators in January when they come in.
Right. Unfortunately, the bulk of the points that we were lost, that were lost, were based on state data, so there's very little room for negotiation there. I mean, essentially, it is what it is. Our only hope is that they don't find other areas of concern and take more points away. Although we are a pretty, pretty tough group of self-assessors here, I'm pretty confident we'll hold firm where we are. Thank you.
Was this a big change from the prior assessment?
Well, it's down, actually, from three years ago. Our Instruction and Program score is down.
Where were we percentage-wise? Do you recall?
I think it was 86%, I believe. I believe it was 86%. So, you know, of course, we're not happy about that, but, you know, this team is digging in to find out the reasons why that happened.
How about the other areas where we're 100? Were we less than that?
We're pretty much in the same area. Our strengths were very similar the last time around.
Okay.
Has the criteria changed at all, like the questions and the rankings?
You know, it has.
Okay.
And not, not being part of the process three years ago, it's very difficult to, they tell me that this process has been distilled down to what it is today as opposed to three years ago, so...
So there was more opportunity to score yourself on other things, other than now it's really drilling into assessment data.
Right. That's what I take away from it, that there were, there were more components last time around where we were able to score higher, and now it's really down to the nuts and bolts of what we do, and that's where we are.
But based on everything that's happening with the department, that does, it makes perfect sense.
It makes perfect sense.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Yeah, I have one. So what happens, just that 80% is the minimum?
Yes.
And what, oh, sorry. What happens if they come in and they find...
Well, I don't exactly know. The meetings that I've attended are talking about action plans and specific, you know, approaches to address the shortcomings, and we're prepared for that. I mean, if, you know, if that's the case, you know, our team will, will get it done.
Moving on the agenda. We have a presentation for our New Jersey ASK scores, and I think the team is here to present. We have Mr. Pearson and Ms., I still say Ms., yeah, sorry, Barbosa, to give us a summary or breakdown by, by grade. So welcome, come on up. We're looking forward to, we were looking forward to tonight.
Yeah, right after this. Yep, yep. I want her here to see this. I didn't want her to disappear.
She's part of the reason why we're doing as well as we are.
She needs to see this.
I'm going to take this out so I can turn and look, okay? Good evening, everyone, first of all. Thank you for your time and your attention to what we're going to present to you today. I do have to say that most of us, as you know, are in new positions this year, and there have been a lot of changes, but between looking at all the data and using what we have, I know that we are all, we all have a positive attitude, and we are really looking forward to moving in a good direction and use all of this information, information to help our students in the long run. So what we're going to do is start out by talking about what the actual state tests are that we're looking at. I will talk a little bit, briefly, about what the state does in particular when we get these results. And then Bart and I are going to break down the information by grade and by cluster. Cluster identifies the different skills for each section, mathematics and English Language Arts. And then we have some initiatives that will be presented by each of our building principals. So as you know, we have NJ ASK, the New Jersey Assessment of Skills and Knowledge for Grades 3 through 8. And then we have the HESPA, the New Jersey High School Proficiency Assessment. And as we know, we are in transition, so over the next couple of years, everything is moving to park as, as we phase this out. English Language Arts covers several different areas. In Grades 3, 4, and 5, and then 6 through 8, and 11, the titles for each cluster change It mostly is the same thing. We have writing, informative explanatory writing, persuasive narrative reading, literature. As we break down each cluster, you will see which areas are specific to, let's say, the elementary school versus the middle school versus the high school. In terms of mathematics, the different areas, it's broken down by, for example, numbers, numerical operations. At the lower grades, you see that it's numerical operations in terms of fractions, and numerical operations in terms of base 10 number system, geometry, algebraic thinking, patterns, and of course, problem solving. And science, which is only tested in Grades 4 and 8 for the state, that covers life science, physical science, and earth science. Things are being aligned from New Jersey Core Curriculum to the Common Core Curriculum over the last year. The two things we, I want to focus on are Partially Proficient, a score of under 200, Proficient, and Advanced Proficient. Those are the three areas in which all of our scores are broken down. And within each area, you will see our comparison to the state and the DFG as well. The first bullet point says, "The New Jersey Department of Ed determined that they would not be able to meet the NCLB Annual Yearly Progress Goal of 100%. As NCLB has been phased out, we have basically understood that it is slightly, just a little bit unrealistic, for 100% of every single school, every single student, to achieve certain benchmarks." So the state has kind of said, well, do you know what? 100%, let's, let's set a little bit of a lower goal. Let's, let's set 90%. 90% I'm going to refer to in just a couple slides. But instead of NCLB, the ESEA, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act Flexibility Waiver, has been phased in, so that, and I'm just going to read this last bullet, "It's a new accountability system providing a more accurate analysis of student achievement." Next slide. "Building-based progress targets were set in equal annual increments so that within six years, the percentage of partial proficient students is reduced by half." I'm going to explain that to you in better terms. I promise I won't use the phrase standard deviation or anything like that, so I'll explain that a little bit better in the next slide. We have student growth percentiles that will be tracked, and SGB will compare students to their academic peers within the state, no longer against the current rubric for the three tiers, partial, proficient, and advanced proficient. All right. Now, what you are looking at is a slide from last year. It's a slide from last year because the information is currently being embargoed by the state, so we cannot pull that information out and include it in the presentation. But I wanted to expand upon that last slide. If you look at the bottom with the high school, the state said, let's shoot for 90%. You can see the baseline data for last year, for two years ago, the high school met that goal. So the state's not so concerned about that. But if you look at the middle school, the baseline for proficiency for, let's say, Language Arts Literacy was 81.9. So I said before, the state wants us to shoot for 90%. So what they're doing is, they're setting small goals for us. Instead of saying, well, you have to get right to 90%, they are mathematically giving us an increment to follow. The increment, it's not a complicated formula, but it's not an arbitrary number. They're not saying, well, you started at 81.9, so let's just shoot for two percentage points. Let me give you three percentage points. It's not an arbitrary number, it's something that's calculated to give a more realistic goal, so that we're really looking at progress and not just shooting for a benchmark percentage across the state. Does that make sense? All right. So those are numbers that we are going to recalculate once we get that information a month from now, a month and a half, something like that. And then that information will be available, and we could provide that. The only note I wanted to add is that in 2015, after this six-year period, the state wants everyone to now shoot for 95% instead of just 90. So we shall certainly see what things look like in 2013 and whether the state will, will stick to that. So now for the meat and potatoes here, we have the state scores. A lot of these slides, you will see Bart and I are going to present them, give you, you know, a few moments to look at some of these numbers. We have a few items that we do want to point out and highlight within each slide, but we will be brief with that. Okay. ASK 3 Mathematics. So you can see for each one of these slides, it will be tiered by Partially Proficient, Proficient, and Advanced Proficient. You can see in the elementary level, we divided up by North End, South End, the total district, and the comparison to state and DFG. The one thing I want to point out is that in North End, the Advanced Proficiency, the 63.8, that went up 27.9% from last year. So that's a big stride for that school in that area. All right? And obviously, having that high percentage of Advanced Proficiency is excellent, anyway. For Advanced 4, ASK 4, there has been a slight decrease from last year to this year, but we are still maintaining 80% proficiency overall in, in North End and South End for that district. ASK 5. The one thing I would like to highlight here is that the Advanced Proficiency went up 15% from last year to this year. And we can see for, for Grades 5, 6, 7, and so on, we were able to track that specific grade from, from year to year. So we're going from 3 to 4 to 5. And of course, like I said in the beginning, all of our building principals have initiatives to address everything that you will see on this presentation tonight. Okay. In terms of the Grades 3, 4, and 5, the strengths, first of all, number and operations in base 10, geometry, and measurement and data. The areas in the elementary grades which are in need of some improvement, one is number and number operations, specifically with fractions, the idea of a part-whole relationship. This is also the one area for Grade 5 that jumped out at me as also being not as much of a strength. Operations and algebraic thinking, I highlighted a few key things in here. It involves solving problems, explaining a lot of the operations, and also writing and interpreting mathematical expressions. This idea of problem solving is something that I noticed a pattern throughout, and you'll hear me talk about it again with, when we get to the middle school grades and the high school. So it all kind of, it carries over, I would say, with each of the grades. Okay. The one thing I noticed about ASK 6 is that the middle school students, the proficiency levels were pretty much maintained from last year to this year, but I will say that the state and DFG numbers, they went down. So while the state and DFG numbers went down, our students maintained the same, the same levels of proficiency. And you can see a slight increase from last year, going from 5 to 6. The one thing I'd like to highlight with ASK 7 is that... The one thing I'd like to highlight with Ask 7 is that our advanced proficient students went up 17.6% from last year. And you will see that change in the next slide with the total proficiency. I literally wrote "wow" on my paper here, going from 56.8 to 72.2. And I am certain that when Nick speaks to you about some of the initiatives at the middle school, you'll understand why this was definitely a success. Ask 8, there was a slight decrease from the previous year, overall, with the state and the DFG as well. Slight decrease in all of these numbers. And you can see that there is a decrease with this. It's something that is going to be addressed. You'll notice that I skipped over grade 6 for now. Grade 6, I'm going to mention in another slide with another cluster. But strengths are patterns in algebra and geometry and measurement. And a lot of these areas, especially in the lower grades, are really relying on students' spatial ability and visual skills, which is really interesting because if we can identify that a lot of our students are right-brained thinkers, where they like to have hands-on things, they like to learn visually, then this is something that our teachers can think about incorporating into those other areas that may not be as visual. In terms of some areas that we need some improvement, number and numerical operations, which you saw with the elementary grades, the ability to choose the appropriate types of numbers and operations for a given situation and describe and interpret our physical environment. And going down to data analysis, the one thing I highlighted was how mathematics is used in the real world. Although the principals will be talking about initiatives, something that I have spoken about to Mike and to Bart, actually, is one of my personal initiatives as math supervisor is I've already started encouraging a lot of the teachers to introduce all of their operations and computations with problem solving and with word problems that are typically held off in a lot of textbooks until the end of the section, the end of a chapter. If you look at any textbook, the first 30 exercises for homework are all, "Do this, do this, it's computation," and then you get to, quote-unquote, "the challenge problems," which are the real-life problems. And I feel like reversing this and approaching it like this, the students will see why you are choosing a certain type of operation for a given situation, and it will directly address that. Go to the next slide. For HESPA Mathematics, I do believe, yes, we went slightly up in proficiency, at the proficient level and the advanced proficient level. And the one thing that I do want to highlight with the high school, and go to the next slide, is that if we look at this grade, this group, in eighth grade, there is a significant jump in proficiency from eighth grade to the high school. So we were very happy to see that this year. The focus area, and that's where the grade 6 pops in, the one cluster that reared its head in every single section was the problem solving. And I kind of alluded to this in the last little cluster I talked about. Problem solving, examining situations that arise in mathematics and other disciplines and common experiences, and the usefulness of math. So it goes back to students really understanding and seeing that math is everywhere, and it can be tied to other branches of math and other disciplines. And if they have a better understanding and confidence in why they're doing things with math and why they're using certain numbers, then it's going to stick with them, and they'll be able to transfer that information when they go into their science class, when they go into their health class and study statistics and things like that. So that's one of our ideas that we want to move forward with that. The Ask 4 Science, the one thing I want to highlight is that the South End students went up significantly in advanced proficient, and their total proficiency from last year went from 80% to 94% in total proficiency for South End. No cards and send this big piece here. And for Ask 8, there was a very slight decrease with all of the numbers, but as you can see, there's still an 87% proficiency rate for this group. The focus areas for grades four and eight were in life science, diversity, biological evolution, and you can see some of the criteria there underneath that specific area. And in grade eight, physical science, chemical reactions, motions and forces, forces and energy transformations, those are the areas that need some improvement and attention in terms of science.
Language Arts follows just about in suit with our math scores. We look here at the English Language Arts for grade three. The part that we'd like to point out to is that in North End, our advanced proficiency went up by 5.3%, which is a pretty important jump when we're talking, especially in writing and reading skills. All right, we jump to the next one. In fourth grade, Language Arts, we have both North End and South End here, just like we laid it out with the math. Our big goals here, in South End, the advanced proficiency went up 7.4%, which is considerable jump from last year. And in North End, they went up again in advanced proficiency to 4.3%. Moving to the middle school grades, as you can see, we come close, I think is the best way to look at this. Our best part to look at here is in our proficient range. Fifth grade, being very close to meeting their DFG, but they are above state average in proficiency. All right, move on to our sixth grade. Oh, can we look at fifth grade from three years? And we see that we have, that's, as you will see with our initiatives, where we're going to be pointing in this direction when it comes to how to address the situation, especially in the fifth grade. Okay, we'll move up. Our focus areas now, you're going to see a little bit of repetitive information here when it comes to what we need to address in terms of Language Arts. Informational texts, reading, and narrative writing seem to be the points that need the most work on. Informational text says here it's a focus on ideas and information that are presented in the text and are available either literally or by extrapolation. Students must synthesize information to construct meaning for what they have read. This is going to be addressed in a big way through just our changeover to Common Core. Informational reading hits upon a nonfiction. We're looking at addressing this not only in Language Arts classes, but in science classes and social studies as well. Same thing with reading. This goes with our open-ended writing. Big push over the years for open-ended question responses. It's becoming, again, our little thorn in our side, the part that we keep pushing at and the part that needs the most work altogether. In terms of writing, it's our narrative writing. And in this case, where they speculate on a story, they draw on stories that they've read and as well as their own experience to develop a story. This, again, will make a lot of connection to the Common Core as well. Okay, let's move up to the next. Grade 6, as we see, this is our first, we're in writing where we come up with meeting our DFG. Sixth grade, our proficiency went up 3.7%, which is an important little leap. All right, move on to the next. If we look here, we see a decent amount of growth when it comes to sixth grade. We're up a considerable percent from last year. We stayed pretty constant over the last two years, but it's nice to see a little bit of movement forward. All right, move to seventh. Seventh grade, and seventh grade is a little dear to my heart, being that this is a grade that I taught last year. Part we'd like to point out here, proficiency, we're above DFG and state average. Advanced proficiency, we are 5.4% above where we were last year. Our total proficiency of 13, we went from 13.8 to 84.8%. Wait if you could just jump ahead, I'm sorry. Yeah, we jumped ahead 13 and 1/2 points from last year, which is nice in the advanced and just all around. Probably our most considerable growth. All right, move on to eighth. Eighth grade, what I'd like to point out here is we're about 5% above DFG in proficiency, which is nice. Again, work to be done here. All right, so let's move on. So, oh, I'm sorry, let's jump back one more. All right, so we can see our growth from 80% to 93%, down to 87%. So we see a lot of repeated information here from what is the same kind of problems that we're having in the elementary grades as we're having in the middle school grades. Informational text and reading, this constitutes one-half of the test. I think last year, there was about three or four assignments themselves based strictly on reading on the New Jersey ASK. Other problem that comes up is the informational explanatory writing. This presents students with an essay topic based on a quotation, adage, or familiar topics. Students are asked to explain their points of view and create original works. Explainatory writing may be based on the writer's personal knowledge or experience on information presented to the writer. Basically connecting themselves to the text, connecting themselves and their experiences to a saying of some sort. And it comes up as nonfiction writing. This, again, is another part that will be addressed pretty fully over the coming years in Common Core. Okay, moving up to HESPA. As we see here, we, I'm trying to pick out, again, the best part here, I think, is we're up in proficiency, and I don't have the percentage in front of me, we're up in proficiency from where we were last year. What's good is we're very low, we should go back one real quick, very low partial proficiency percentage altogether, which puts most of our students in the HESPA range in the proficient and advanced proficiency rating. Okay, we go. And again, considerable growth. So Cedar Grove, and this is an analysis of just about everything that we've been talking about. Cedar Grove earned proficient levels greater than DFG and state in the following, in grade three, Language Arts, and in math and North End, and grade seven, Language Arts Literacy, and grade 11, Language Arts Literacy and Mathematics. So Cedar Grove students almost always score at or above the state results in the content areas in all grade levels. Specifically, the following were a strong advanced proficient performance in areas as compared to the state, also higher than DFG. So grade three would be the English Language Arts and Mathematics at North End, grade four, Mathematics and Science at South End, grade five, Mathematics, grade six, English Language Arts and Mathematics, grade seven, English Language Arts and Mathematics, and grade 11, Language Arts Literacy. Cedar Grove made larger gains as compared to those of state and DFG in the following areas. This is larger proficiency gains in grade three, Language Arts, North and South End, grade three, English Language Arts, grade seven, English Language Arts, and grade 11, Language Arts Literacy and Mathematics. Cedar Grove has also made gains as compared to those of DFG in the following areas. This is larger advanced proficiency gains. Grade three, Language Arts at North End and South End, grade three, Mathematics at North End, grade four, English Language Arts at North End and South End, and grade seven, English Language Arts and Mathematics.
I'll just briefly say a few things about our SATs and our AP scores. You can see that there is not, there is not a drastic change between the scores over the last five years, verbal, mathematics, and the writing portion. We are just flirting with the 500 range at this point in all three areas. The AP results over the last three years, the one thing I want to highlight first is if you look at even two years ago, the, we have implemented a handful of new AP courses, including the AP Economics, which is split into macro and microeconomics, music theory, and US Government and Politics. You can see that the number of tests in even two years went from 100 to 122 exams taken. If you look at the numbers, you can see that the majority of them are threes or better. Just to reiterate, on the AP scale, the lowest score is a one, the highest score you could possibly get is five. Fours and fives are where a lot of our students end up getting college credit. So you can, and a three is considered passing. So most of our scores are above threes, and I know that we've made considerable progress in comparison with a lot of other schools in our DFG with the AP program. And I know that in the last few years, at least 16 students have been recognized as AP scholars, meaning that they score a three or better on multiple tests. And in the last two years in particular, we've had several students with honor and with distinction, meaning that we've had students take maybe five or six exams and get fours and fives on all of them. So that's something that continues to be a push at the high school.
So moving forward, district-wide initiatives. So we're looking at first, an analysis of map assessment scores, including using the discard continuum to differentiate instruction in reading, math, and science. We're looking at analysis of Terranova, New Jersey ASK, and HESPA scores in terms of where to center our instruction. Continual curricular revisions, alignment, and professional development for successful implementation of the Common Core standards, and to reinforce and refine the intervention and referral service, the IRNS process with teachers. And of course, developing a better understanding of the standards and components of the strong teacher evaluation model, which standards include professional knowledge, instructional planning, instructional delivery, assessment for and of student learning, learning environment, professionalism, and student achievement in SGO and SGP's. Okay, so now we're going to hear from Mrs. Mattia, Ms. Dyer. Thank you.
Maybe I'm not.
Good evening. Ms. Dyer and I are going to present the initiative for North End and South End. And in working together, one of our goals, as you see, and I'm going to start with number two, because I think that is one of the ones that we've really been honing in on, and that is the vertical and horizontal articulation between and within North End and South End teachers. We feel that that's a very important component to bring consistency to the two elementary schools as we move forward together into the middle school. So that, I think, is extremely important for us, to have all of our students on the same ground as they come together. The first one, the development of writing rubrics, K-4 aligned with Common Core standards. One of the things that we've really worked on since September is to take the writing and to really look at it in terms of Common Core. Where should our kids be at each level by the end of the year? So the teachers have worked very hard to develop rubrics aligned with the Common Core standards and to give common assessments across the board to the students on the same grade level, and to then use those as benchmarks on what they're going to do to work on the skills and strategies they need to get them to the point of meeting Common Core standards. Number three, we're beginning a reading and writing pathways after-school program that will hone in on those students who scored partial proficient on NJASK so that we can help them from, I believe we're starting the end of November, or somewhere around there, through May, honing in on the specific skills that are going to help them to achieve better and to sharpen their skills in both reading and writing.
Will that be mandatory?
I don't know if we've decided that yet. I don't, I don't.
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, I don't think some of them, you know, some have after-school commitments or whatever. But we're going to try to strongly encourage as many as we can.
To continue with what we were talking before in regards to writing, we really, Mrs. Mattia and I really feel strongly that writing across the curriculum has to continue to improve at North
to improve at North and South End, and therefore we want to have more consistent writing assignments and assessments throughout the year, and then also having the teachers collaboratively score those writing assignments and assessments, so that there is that inter-rater reliability, and so that a D, or a score of a, on one rubric in one classroom is the same in another classroom, so that we can, we're all looking for those same skills. Also, we will continue to provide BSI services for those students that are at risk in reading and math. And lastly, Mrs. Mattio and I have talked about creating a teachers' academy for developing teachers in a variety of areas, including but not limited to analyzing data, using that data to just to drive instruction, and also differentiate instruction, as well as writing across the curriculum, not just writing in writing, but writing in science and social studies and other areas, and including mathematics, where we see that in regards to problem solving, kids are expected to be able to explain their thinking and how they got to their answer, and their writing comes into play in mathematics as well. So those are the things that we're going to continue to work on at North End.
And Solphin.
And Solphin.
I think the overwhelming theme here tonight is moving forward, and that's what we intend to do as well at Memorial Middle School, hoping that these initiatives that we're going to continue and some that we're adding are going to help us do that, and that's move forward. Number one, if we look, evaluation and revision of the Math Plus program, which is an extension of our mathematics class, but looking at really targeting the concepts that the students are struggling with in their regular math class, and carrying that over with the consistency in Math Plus. If we look at number two, revision of eighth grade rubrics for placement in Language Arts and Mathematics at the high school level, working with Bart and Janine, as well as Mr. Mangili, to revise those rubrics. Looking at number three, continuing Homework Alliance, which is a program that we initiated at the middle school to create an environment that's quiet and conducive to students getting their homework done, even though they're under the impression that maybe home might be a quiet environment. The phone rings, they run to the restroom, they run to the refrigerator, and before they know it, homework has taken three hours. So that's been very successful for us. We've had quite a bit of turnout for Homework Alliance, and we're proud to continue that this year as well. Math strategies, again, working with the students, working with the students that were partially proficient, scoring under two hundred, we're going to be implementing math strategies again this year, and tweaking it with Ms. Mishah to hopefully gain a better understanding of how to help the students, especially with targeting those math concepts. If you look at number four, addition of reading/writing pathways, you'll see some commonalities with the other slides across the district, we're implementing this, reading/writing pathways after-school program through a federal funding grant that Mr. Kenny worked on. If we move to number five, additional inclusion support for special education in fifth grades, social studies and science, they had touched on that earlier, working with those fifth grade classrooms, we're now proud to say that we have full inclusion throughout with science and social studies. This year, and actually I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kenny for number six, we've been able to implement a focus team that was established not too long ago to address the hierarchy of needs, and Mr. Kenny can elaborate on that.
One of the things that we felt we needed to do at the middle school level, because we're dealing with a very challenging time for students, both socially, emotionally, and academically, was to really take a look at what the needs in those three areas, what they really were, and disaggregate them. So we've put together a team of support personnel, along with the feedback and assistance of the teams and the teachers, to really diagnose where are our biggest concerns for middle school students, and then going forward, addressing those on a larger scale about what we can implement, not only to help them socially and emotionally, but again, taking care of those two pieces as well will ultimately affect the academic piece on that side.
I'd like to first start off by saying that, Mr. Featherman, everybody's come up here with a partner. My short time at the high school, I've had an opportunity to get into many classrooms, and there is a lot of things that are being done which focus on improving student learning and understanding. Right now, we're looking at common formative assessments for our teachers, that they'll be getting together to discuss those during faculty meetings, in addition to summative assessments. Now, if you're not quite sure what a formative assessment is, I'll just give you the quick detail. It's current learning, learning while you're teaching. And what I mean by that is preparing the students for a test by giving them two or three pre-tests before that test comes. So you're gauging an understanding of what they know about the topic that's being discussed in the classroom. A summative assessment is an assessment that's taken at the end of a unit test, a chapter test, an NJASK, for example. You're getting the whole feel of what they've understood at the end. Right now, our teachers, through PLCs, will be working on strategies to look at that data, analyze that data, and see what they can do to better prepare our students to take these assessments that are coming down the pike next year, specifically our PARC. Additionally, every discipline will assign a minimum of one research-based assignment during the school year, and to piggyback with that, our, all departments will be assigned a minimum of one persuasive writing task during the school year, which will be assessed utilizing the HESPA holistic scoring rubric. Understand that our HESPA, this will be our last year for taking that HESPA this year. We will be going to the end-of-the-year assessments with PARC next year. Additionally, required summer assignments administered for all math classes, and also number six, our math lab courses for grades nine to eleven. Now, how students get placed into math lab and language arts lab is based off of our ninth graders, it's the NJ Pass assessment that's taken in March when the HESP is given, as well as our S test for our sophomores, and also the HESP test for our juniors. If students do not become proficient in ninth or 10th grade by taking that NJ Pass or that S test, they are put in a math lab or a language arts lab. That is not negotiable. I fielded some phone calls over the summer with some parents saying, well, because my child's in a math lab or a language arts lab, they don't get an elective, and that's true, because the focus is wanting them to pass the HESP test when they become juniors. And we want to minimize the amount of deficiencies that they may have in math. And we all know, if you don't get something in math at a young age, it begins to grow, and you begin to get larger and larger gaps in that. So that's really what we're trying to focus. And what's good about that as well is I've sat in many of the math labs, as well as the language arts labs, there are smaller classes, and they do use iXL program, which provides students an opportunity to go into the media center, or use our mobile cart, and to work on questions online that are geared towards HESPA. And that's the purpose of our math lab and language arts lab. Okay? Thank you.
And thank you.
And thank all of you. Any comments from the board?
Just a couple of quick questions. Who taught the calculus BC class last year? Okay, guess what, you're fired, you're going back into the classroom. Wow, that's, those score, and did you do the AB, oh, you didn't do the AB.
For nine years, I taught the AB, and a couple years, including last year, I have had students who have wanted to work on the BC. AB is basically, let's say, topics one through fifteen.
Right.
And BC is topics one through twenty. So I would say that it was like seventy-five, twenty-five. The student did seventy-five percent of the additional work, and I would meet with those that, I mean, last year it was one student, in other years it's been multiple students.
Right.
Just to give them more resources and work on those additional topics like during lunch and things like that.
Right, those are very impressive. And seventh grade, LA?
I'd say a good portion of that goes with my ex-college, seventh grade teacher, Jean Harrison.
Those are good. Well, congratulations on your scores, it's nice to see up there. I just have a quick question about the ASK and the MAP test, the MAP scores that came back, came out. Did you see, was there, and did you see any, when you dug into them and you analyzed both sets of scores, did you see an alignment or not, or what did you see when you evaluated those scores? Just curious, because there are two different types of assessments, pencil and paper versus computer, I'm just wondering if they matched.
I obviously will speak on behalf of the.
Because you crunched the numbers a little bit.
I did see that, and maybe going into it, I naturally was thinking, I already knew what areas were a little bit lower from the State testing, so I went into it trying to pinpoint, let me see if the problem solving is a little below, and it was, on some of those areas, and the numerical operations. So it's some of the basics that are getting lost sometimes, and it's, it's very hard to pinpoint, you know, where those things are coming from. And that's, yeah, I was at middle school, high school, definitely, and I think that elementary school was a little bit more even when it came to, you know, elementary principals might tell me if I'm on the right track or whatever, but I, I'm pretty sure, looking at the MAP testing, that there was, there was some evenness between the numerical operations and the data and the geometry.
Right, right.
And then in some areas of middle school, there were differences. In my head right now, I'm thinking of like the color, there's like a color-coded graph, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But it did make sense that, and there was, during the MAP training, we were looking at a website online, and it talked about the correlation between the State testing and the MAP, and how statistically, they did the research to see how close they are, they're pretty close.
Now, just related to that, so the NJASK is based on New Jersey standards, and MAP testing is based on Common Core, right? So it is different in that way, so in some comparison, it's tricky, or?
Well, in some respects, though, well, the NJASK has been, they've been piloting.
Right, they've been reaching to get to Common Core.
So there have been some questions that have addressed Common Core, whereas MAP is all.
All Common Core, okay.
Based. But we're seeing that there's very common trends on the data from MAP compared to NJASK scores. There's still informational text, that nonfiction piece is an area of concern, obviously, and writing is something that is one of the things that came through as well. In mathematics, it was problem solving, and same kinds of things that we're seeing on NJASK. So we're, what's nice with MAP, though, is as the teachers drill through those reports, then they can see their children broken down into groups, and those groups are then already formed for them, and they can drill down and click on the next level, which tells them exactly what kids are able right now to learn, they're developmentally ready, based on how they performed on that test. So it gives the teacher almost a guide map of saying, okay, this group of kids are ready to learn these skills, and so on and so on. So it's really very a powerful informational tool for the teachers to be able to drive their instruction.
Yeah, I think, exactly, I think that's what we, I think we've really tried to help the teachers to see that NJASK is more of a subject, it's they, but the MAP is giving them all the skills that each kid needs, that they're strong in and that they can work in, so it drives their instruction more than this is just a score and it's the end. It's really the beginning, and they get that score.
Right.
Of what they can do with it. So I think that's important.
And if I could just add a little bit more, one of the things that we talked about, of course, with NJASK going away, and PARC coming on the board, and the slide that has been embargoed that we can't talk about yet, we're looking at progress, and we're looking at growth, and with the MAP assessments, we'll be able to look at and show that growth, or to see which kids are growing, which kids aren't, and then develop a plan for those kids so that we can help them meet their needs as well.
In that current year.
Right, and you don't have to wait, the New Jersey ASK, you're waiting and waiting.
Well, because here it is, it's November, you know, and we're talking about these things, and some of the other results still haven't even been released from the State yet, so this is more instead of after the fact, as we try to, you know, CPR, or whatever else we can to get them back on track, but it's a little sometimes after the fact.
Within forty-eight hours, we can get that data.
Right.
That's great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
The whole team, it was in, it's really good information.
Hi.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Let's hear what's going on at the high school.
Hey, hello.
Welcome.
Yeah, well, the Austin Council's not had a meeting in a while, we were scheduled to have one today, but there's a blood drive coming up at our, at the high school, and there was special training for the blood drive for the Red Cross Club, so we canceled our meeting, our meeting is next Monday, though. But as of now, we raised over five hundred dollars on penny wars, and with that money, we are donating it to Restore the Shore for the Ford Walker League, and for the, for more Hurricane Sandy relief. Our winter balls in a month from tomorrow, that is a very exciting thing that we're getting ready for, and we have never done this before, so it's a nice new experience that we're trying out, and as I said before, our annual lip sync is coming up, and all of the grades have picked a theme, and now we're just getting started. And that's it.
Can you explain a little bit more about the.
Oh, yes. Usually, we have a homecoming dance. We decided not to have the homecoming dance, there were some, we're trying to make it better, we want to get more of the student body involved. As of right now, we get around two hundred kids, maybe less, at the homecoming dance, so we want us to make this better. We're going to try to do like a dinner beforehand, maybe in our cafeteria, we're going to, we want, we have like our, all different things to go along with, like color scheme, and all of these things that are going to make it, make it better, make it more enjoyable and appealing to the students, so.
Great.
Very excited.
Good deal.
Can I bring a date?
Sure. Please do.
My partner.
Oh, you were singing up there anyway.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, may, under the Office of Business Administrator and Board Secretary, may I have a motion for B1, and that's a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of our October twenty-second meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Mandala.
Aye. Under bills, may I have a motion for B2, and that is to pay the list of bills, the bills as listed, for the month of November, so far.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Mandala.
Aye. Under business, may I have a motion for B3 through B9, and that's a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of October. B4 is to certify that no account line has been over-expended during the month of November. B5 is a motion to approve the submission to the New Jersey Department of Education, the district performance review, that's the DPR, and the statement of assurance, the SOA, that was reviewed tonight. B6 is a motion to approve the submission of the amended Cedar Grove Board of Education Long Range Facility Plan, and that said amendment complies with the five-year reporting requirements per the Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act. B7 is a motion to accept the generous donation of five hundred dollars from the Cedar Grove Junior Women's Club, and B8 is a motion to accept the donation of medical supplies valued at five hundred dollars from the Medicine Shop here in Cedar Grove. And B9 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract for the student number as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Mandala.
Aye. From the Office of the Superintendent, I think you have a brief report tonight?
I do.
For some updates?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mandala. While it's not a comprehensive report this time around, we will have a much more extensive one.
Cedar Grove High School, for the annual open house. Both, rather, parents of both seventh and eighth graders are encouraged to attend this informative meeting, to learn all about the academic programs offered at CGHS. And again, we hope to see you there. Thank you.
No, thank you. Moving on the agenda, under Personnel, may I have a motion for S1 through, wow, is it the whole agenda? Through S24. Wow, okay, a lot of Personnel stuff, huh?
That's a motion to approve the Superintendent's Report. S2 is a motion to approve the instructors as listed, that are needed to implement the reading/writing pathways, the NCLB program. It's a motion, S3 is to rescind retroactive to September 1st, item S22 on the April 30th Agenda, appointing Megan Siegel as a Memorial Middle School Zero Band teacher. S4 is a motion to retroactively approve Cassandra Imperator, Memorial Middle School Zero Period Band teacher, effective September 1st. S5 is a motion to approve Jeff Carr as assistant wrestling coach. S6 is a motion to approve Michael Musab for the boys, for the position of boys freshman basketball coach. S7 is a motion to approve Nicholas Miller for the position of boys JV basketball coach. S8 is a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Lisa Piazza, North End Power Professional. S9 is a motion to approve Ann Ratty as a new North End Power Professional. S10 is a motion to approve Tony Anne Venero, maternity leave coverage for fourth grade at South End. S11 is a motion to approve on first reading, to allow the Cedar Grove High School AP US History and AP Government and Politics classes to travel to Washington DC, that's in May. S12 is a motion to approve on first reading to allow Cedar Grove High School Band and Choir to travel to Disney World in Orlando, Florida, that is also in May. S13 is a motion to approve Stacy K to apply for Sooner, is that how you say it? Sooner Grant, to purchase instructional guides, graphic novels, and other nonfictional works. S14 is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteers for fingerprinting as listed. S15 is a motion to approve the list of school volunteers. S16 is a motion to authorize the attendance at all the events as listed. S17 is a motion to approve the leave of absence as listed. S18 is a motion to approve the students for classroom observations as listed. S19 is a motion to approve the following, the job description for substitute nurse. S20 is a motion to approve the teacher substitutes as listed. S21 is a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Valerie Torriello as the high school co-head softball coach. S22 is a motion to rescind Kimberly Melita Rec from North End Morning Care, effective November 15th. S23 is a motion to approve Luann Longo for North End Morning Care, and S24 is a motion to approve Margaret O'Connell, North End Power Professional.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Mandala?
Aye. The meeting is open to the public for comments for items on or off the agenda. You just have to come to the microphone, please, state your name and address. Did you really? You just have to pull that.
I'm Lori Downs, I live at 15 Tuna Vista Road. My question is, I know you look a lot as a district on more and more kids achieving proficient in the proficient range on these ASK tests, but what about, do you look at why more kids aren't achieving the advanced proficient? And the example I use is the fifth grade language arts. It looks like, if my math is right, only like six or seven out of 134 kids achieved advanced proficient, whereas, I think it was something like 60% of them got advanced proficient in that same class for math, so do you look at why these kids? I mean, it's great that more and more are getting proficient, but, you know, this, what about the kids who should be advanced proficient? Do you?
We actually, we do talk about that all the time, because the push is not only getting partial proficient to proficient, but proficient to advanced proficient, and what are we doing for that group of students? So I'll leave it to you guys if you want to address it specifically.
Well, I think we talked a little bit more about the implication that we're going to receive, that we're getting from our MAP assessments, too. So as we look forward and are being held more accountable for showing growth, we're going to have, teachers are going to be held more accountable for making sure that kids are moving in that direction as well. And, you know, what's unfortunate is, is we're going to be moving in that direction, and we're changing the assessment next year to the dark assessment. So, you know, we do spend time looking at those things, and I don't know if anybody else knows to speak to that, but it is a, the language arts portion of that test, for even the jump between third and fourth grade, and the jump between fourth and fifth grade, the level of difficulties is much higher, and so we're going to maintain that.
There's just, in that grade, there's such a big gap between other, you know, the DFGs and the, what we got here. I was just wondering, you know, you're, just like your credits, you know, Mr. Pearson, who one of my kids was lucky enough to have with the jumps, you know, do you look at why this whole grade as a whole did so, not that they did poorly, because a lot of them achieved proficient, but, you know, do you look at maybe some of the teachers, and I'm not saying that my kids didn't have good teachers, because I have no idea if they did well enough, but, you know, those factors, too, and not just the student's growth, you know what I'm saying?
But what might be helpful to look at there, we don't have the information here, but what may be helpful there, is you're looking at that number of, that it, there's not, the percentages in that high in advanced proficient, but what would be interesting to see, is if the number went lower in the partial proficient, and the number jumped higher in proficient, because then that means they are making the progression. So I don't know the answer to this, but if we looked at that data from last year, that number, the same class, their number in partial proficient, the percentages could have been higher, so they are moving in the right direction into proficient, and then the next.
For the bulk of the kids, but what about those advanced kids who?
No, so then the next step would be now to take that group and move them into advanced proficient, so it would be interesting to see if we, I'm not saying we did that.
Right.
I'm saying it would be good to see if our number dropped from partial proficient, increased to proficient, now the next step would be to bring that into advanced proficient. So, you know, as Mrs. Burke said, we look at that all the time, to move, to keep the, you know, the latter moving up, especially with the proficient. You don't want to just keep those kids in proficient, you want to now bring them to the next level, so we've definitely looked at that.
And also, too, one of the things that we ask for is, when you get those scores, it's a snapshot of that grade, and it tells you how that grade is doing, but one of the things that they show now is, that we were asked for, is tracking grades, because there could be, you know, a deficiency within that grade, rather than just looking at the snapshot of that, that particular, you know, looking at all the fifth grade, where have they gone over the last three years? So that's, I think that's really the important thing, is tracking over three years and seeing where they're going, or, you know, three to five years, where their growth is. And if you, even though the partially, the advanced proficient number may be small, over the last couple of years, it has been growing. So that's where you see the growth, not necessarily snapshot of that grade. So as long as those numbers are improving over the course of the years, then that's what.
How would I find that out? Like, do you have the ones from previous years? Because I'm pretty sure this particular grade dropped.
Well, I think, I think what we have to be careful about, too, is tests change every single year, and so you're not really, we're not able to compare like to like. Like we said, Common Core is now, NJASK is testing Common Core standards, have they added more to the fifth grade test? We don't know. You know, it's such a moving target, not that we're all, we're all asking the exact same questions as you, but you can't do compare, 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 because every year, the test is completely different. They don't keep the test the same, so when you try to compare, did this student body improve every, this class improve every year that they progress, you don't know what the test is.
Especially, I recall last year, wasn't there an issue with the seventh grade math?
Yep.
Where there was a totally different test given?
And if it was across the state.
Right, and it was across the state, it was a whole big uproar about it.
And fifth grade might be the, I mean, I haven't looked at it in that detail, but fifth grade might be that same thing, we might be able to look across the state and see what, what has happened.
There's a very, very big difference between a fourth grade test and a fifth grade test. Having taught fifth grade for a number of years, we know, it's a very different type of writing. So kids who may have scored advanced proficient on the fourth grade test, you might find a dip in fifth grade, because the test on a whole in language arts is very different. More is expected of them, and sometimes it really is drilling down and seeing what, was it writing, was it reading? You know, was it a particular cluster in the reading, a particular cluster in the MAP that, in the, in the reading, that was more of a challenge than we can see in the fifth grade. So I do find, from my own experience of teaching fifth, that there was a very, there was.
It takes longer, too, in terms of pieces, and there's, in a three, like say, the reading section is three sections, ultimately goes up to four, and it keeps growing through middle school.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting. Future meeting announcements, we will, this was our only meeting for the month of November, we will be meeting December 3rd and December 17th, here at North End Media Center. 7:00 PM will begin our executive session, and then 8:00 PM will be our public session. So with that, I'd like to adjourn, and I guess we have no other executive session, like that, yes. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Mandala?
Aye. The meeting is adjourned, everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.